Oh, um, well.
Good evening. Good evening, welcome. Um, welcome to the Central 21, Thursday, January twenty fifth. Back to staff at twenty tw- twenty twenty four. Condom is select road here in the town hall. Um, we have a post of the agenda for the second second favor.
Aye.
So at six thirty on the dash, a public hearing, special permit accessory dwelling twenty two wheel place. And business map law law fifty dash five dash four zero. And the applicant owner is in a red start.
In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty eight, section nine and eleven, and the situated zone by law, section five thirty accessory dwelling special permit, and section nine forty referrals, the planning board will conduct the public hearing at six thirty P M. On Thursday, July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, and set forth here in the town hall. Six hundred Chief Justice Bush, how is Citrus mass? The subject of the hearing is an application submitted by applicant Stephen B Jordan on behalf of owner Angela Stowe for an accessory dwelling special permit for a second loan in an existing detached garage at property located at twenty two B O place situation property in show on accessories map law parcel. Fifty dash five dash forty percent available to review in the attorney's office, et cetera, et cetera.
Good evening, I'm Jake. I guess that'll be long yet.
Excellent, I haven't been hearing a lot.
No.
Uh, for the record, Steve B Orkin, I'm here with Angela Stowe. Uh, it's exactly what you read in the ad. She has a two car garage right now with a small loft. Uh, and what we're looking to do is to take half of that garage according to the plan, uh, which is two hundred and eighty four square feet on the first floor and a hundred and twenty square feet on the second floor. Um, it's going into a one bedroom room that he's going to occupy herself. Um, her life has changed a little bit, kids are growing, and she's got a pretty good sized house there that she doesn't necessarily need, but she just wanna get rid of it. So she's looking to be able to rent that house in the future and stay there, not sell it.
No.
Occupy the garage itself. Um, on, on the plan, we did put in there, um, that there's additional, uh, two parking spots for the unit itself. One of those, uh, if you look at the plan, it said if, if we needed to, we would add that space. It's on the right hand side, each side of the plan. Um, today I did meet with a couple of the neighbors and I actually know Karen, uh, who was yesterday, stuck in by the Karen. And, uh, we do understand that there is a, a parking issue in the street up there. It's pretty narrow and a lot of people, lots are a little bit smaller. So, um, we are willing to actually create that parking spot. And we'll, we'll put crushed stone in there so that there is two spots for the unit. Um, it is serviced, uh, we'll be serviced by town sewer and the sewer department will give us, will give them a detailed plan of the actual attachment to the sewer, whatever way they want us to do it, as well as the water department itself. So I'm sure that the, you know, there'll be two conditions that we have to meet, also those as well. Um, she's aware that she has to provide you a letter study that she was occupying one of the two structures as well. There's any questions? Uh, that was the exterior of the building. There's no square footage change with what's on the site. It's just a reuse of the garage itself. So, uh, we're gonna be adding a door on the eastern elevation so that she can get in and out of the unit from there. Second means of that, uh, egress is actually through the garage itself, which is fine. We checked that with the building inspector as well, so there's two means of egress there. And we're adding a couple of windows, uh, just to add some more light in on the second floor. There was no window. So that's got a double window on the back of the building as well as a small round window that you can see in the elevation. That's actually in the staircase area, just to add a little bit of light into the staircase area. And on the eastern side, yeah, we're adding a door and we're adding additional window on the east side of the building. Uh, no changes to the west side, which faces towards your existing house. Uh, that's pretty much it. This is the simplest one I've probably ever done.
It says here in my note that there is no clauses, is that true?
Yeah.
Yes, that's, that's a hundred percent correct.
Okay.
There's no clause.
Okay, we are very little, okay.
There'll be a wall or something like that, furniture.
Try and get to that, just keep it, won't, it's got boring. Uh, any questions?
Move on the ground, it's a central closet.
Yeah.
There's storage unit, uh, there's storage above, but what happens is it's below the elevation of, uh, the building height inside. We're actually dropping where you see the loft itself in the garage, we're actually dropping the ceiling so that we don't have to go up and add a dormer on the building. So she could walk up a couple stairs and there's unfinished space. But it doesn't have the head height in that area of the garage.
And once again, there's a level.
Huh?
And once it's prepared.
Yeah, pretty much.
So this is a lot that you. Um, any questions, Rebecca? I was.
If there're lighting, um, if you need that.
Uh, yeah, there'll be light at the door.
Oh, get away?
Yeah. It's not right back to the doors.
The, uh, front elevations still shows the two garage doors.
Those are gonna stay.
They're both gonna stay, even the one that's.
She wants to hide the unit as much as she can. I recommended a bay window and she wants to keep the door so it looks like a two car garage. So we're actually gonna build a wall inside that so that the exterior won't change. And you can see on the floor plan, it, it goes in about six inches and then create, we'll create a wall there.
Ethically, I wanted it to look the same.
I think.
I can tell you, if this child really wants that, I do not help you in house. So let you down, not Mr. Allen, me to the bellboy.
Yeah.
So I had to go down and come to the right now. Uh, sorry, it's a.
It is, it's a hidden secret, yeah.
Never like any further than a bellboy, if I want to sit in a mouth.
We're all gone here.
Just for about eight questions.
Um, now it meets the requirements. Um, your, your draft version that I sent out didn't have a condition added, but we'll add a condition at the end. So, um, that, um, we have a catch, we'll be required throughout the fourth parking space and question on two people. So I mean, it's not on the grass, but we'll add a condition at the last thing.
I appreciate that, sure.
Just, just so the board understands, we are going in front of the zoning board of appeals as well. And that's only because the lot has ninety seven feet of frontage instead of a hundred. So we're required to follow with them, we're rolling for that February year.
Yes, sure. If you're very nice, you're all of your match. Any comment for the public? You want to move your lot online?
No, they aren't.
Yes.
There was, there was a neighbor in the room and I, I chatted with him ahead of times.
Okay. Then we'll all start then.
I move to make the following findings a fact. On November twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, Agent Steven L. Grohlland on behalf of Captain Elder Angela Stowe, filed for special permit for accessory dwelling in the detached structure at the property in twenty two B O place. Excuse me. According to the town, a situated accessories records, the D property twenty two B O place is owned by Angela and Stowe. Revised on a floor plan submitted with the application, the planning board finds the area, floor area of the accessory dwelling to be four hundred four square feet. Floor area of a primary dwelling is twenty two hundred square feet. According to the application and accessories records, the accessory dwelling is eighteen percent of the floor area of a primary dwelling. This meets the size requirements of five thirty point two F of the zoning by law for accessory dwellings as the by law allows seven hundred fifty square feet of forty percent of the total floor area of the primary dwelling, whichever is greater. The accessory dwelling is subordinate to the existing single family home. For the accessory dwelling unit will be a complete separate post people unit and there will be only one accessory dwelling of the lot. By the property is in the residential R three zoning district. The proposed accessory dwelling structure makes all require setbacks, building height, yard requirements for a primary dwelling. Six, the proposed accessory dwelling is to be located in the existing detached garage of the existing single family home. Access will be powered doors on the west and east sides of the detached accessory dwelling. Seven, the appearance of the accessory dwelling will be in keeping with the parents of the primary dwelling. Eight, the site, the whole site plan for twenty two B O place city mass by Webby Engineering Associates dated November twenty two, twenty twenty three, shows the location of the existing primary dwelling and proposed accessory dwelling inside the existing detached garage. The plan shows a paved driveway which appears capable of supporting two cars of the primary dwelling. It is possible that there is a garage space and a room on the lot for two cars for the accessory dwelling. Ample parking appears to be provided. Nine, the applicant owner has admitted a sign known as stated that she will occupy one of the dwellings of the project. Ten, accessory dwelling will be serviced by town war and sewer. The water department has commented that the accessory dwelling will require a separate water service with a connection fee. The sewer division indicated the existing sewer line is beyond its useful life and will need to be replaced by a drain layer licensed by the town situat. They would like a plan showing utility locations of sewer, water, gas, and buried electric applicable. A half sewer connection fee of eight thousand dollars will be owed for the added accessory dwelling to the sewer system. Eleven, the application meets the standards of the situated zoning by law, the accessory dwelling special permit. There's some, can you have a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Who?
Sorry.
A plug, um, see, I didn't find. Is that, which, that statement conflict with the requirement go to the Z B A?
No. That's, that's a frontage requirement. So they need the setbacks, building height, side setbacks.
Okay. So that we address that in in the conditions then?
We do by saying that all applicant permits have to be received prior to a building, you know, part of construction and going from it.
Um, on number eight, uh, where do we? Does the comment about parking on the lawn get superseded by this creation, this crushed stone parking space?
I would think so, yeah.
So why don't we say this?
Okay, so, um.
And the applicant will create uh, crushed stones parking area?
Okay.
Okay, show our time.
The applicant will create first still parking space for one, for one car.
A second is amended.
Okay. Favor?
Aye.
I will approve the special permit for an accessory dwelling at twenty two B O place for the following conditions. In addition to the standing conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the planning board after public hearing on twelve seventeen, one fifteen. One, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions. Any construction should substantially conform to plans submitted with the application by two oh nine design dated October sixteen, twenty twenty three, as revised through January eleventh, twenty twenty four, consisting of one sheet including elevations and floor plans. Design pre sheet A one, Angela Stowe twenty two B O place situated mass, plan of land at twenty two B O place situated mass, appears for Angela Stowe dated November twenty second, twenty twenty three by Webby Engineering Associates Inc. Two, the number of bedrooms in the accessory dwelling is limited by loft and the location and size indicated on the floor plans submitted with the application. Three, no further expansion, accessory dwelling floor area is allowed without further review by the law. Four, upon occupancy of the accessory dwelling, the applicant shall provide a legalized affidavit that an owner is living in one of the dwelling units. A yearly certification that the owner occupies one of the dwelling units must be provided by match one, either way. Five, all requirements with the board of building department, zoning board of appeals, department of public works, fire department, and other town agencies must be met prior to occupancy of the accessory dwelling. Six, the accessory dwelling shall conform to all applicable standards in the building plumbing, electrical, chemical, fire, health codes, and bylaw. Seven, water connection must meet all requirements of the D W water division for the accessory dwelling. A separate service is required connection fee. Eight, sewer connection must meet all requirements of the D W sewer division for the accessory dwelling. The sewer line is beyond its useful life and shall be replaced by a drain layer licensed by the town situated in the location directed by the sewer division. A plan showing the location of utilities including sewer, water, gas, and buried electric applicable shall be provided to the sewer division and utilities included on the gas bill. And one half sewer connection fee of eight thousand dollars will be owed for the accessory dwelling. Nine, any lighting installed shall be down lighting, not shed light on other properties. Construction work shall not begin prior to seven A M weekdays and eight A M Saturdays and transseas related than seven P M or sunset when generous weather. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal state federal holidays. Construction includes idle vehicles, delivery of materials to the site, and all other construction activities. Eleven, runoff from the proposed accessory dwelling shall not be increased from the property. Twelve, erosion and sedimentation control devices shall be installed to prevent any erosion or sedimentation from leaving the site during construction. Silt saw or silt fence shall be used as necessary and extended around a limited work. So disturbance beyond what is shown on the plan is not allowed. Thirteen, the parents in the accessory dwelling will be in keeping with the primary dwelling unless otherwise required by the Massachusetts Building Code and new series stairs needed to provide primary or secondary needs of egress to the accessory dwelling shall be located on the side or rear of building. Fourteen, at least two private off street parking spaces shall be available but used by the occupants of the accessory dwelling. In addition to those parking spaces, there will be fourth space that will be gravelled.
Yeah, that, the applicant shall be required to construct the fourth parking space of crushed stone or proved equal so parking is not occurring on the grass.
Is there a second?
What was the discussion?
Yes, your point.
Number eight. The number eight, uh, the second sentence in it, if the sewer line is beyond useful life, shall be replaced by the drain layers. The town situated. Okay, when he wrote this, we're not sure whether we're gonna be connecting into the existing sewer that's at the house or putting a new sewer line in totally for this. And the regulation in the town for the replacement of a sewer line is if there's a sale taking place on the existing house. So if we can just say that the sewer connection will meet all the requirements of D P W of the sewer department, that would be better than saying that she has to put that new line in because they may not require it at the sewer.
This, you put the comment with, this is the comment that was came from.
I, I realize that. But again, they were not aware of the fact that it might be a whole new line going into a separate dwelling. So, if, we will meet their regulations. So if, if we can't make that up without.
I'm not changed, uh, I think what I would say is that in a location directed by the sewer division, I mean, if they direct something different, they direct something.
Yeah, as long as it doesn't say she has to put that line in, but we'll do what the sewer department wants. So again, the note came in very early.
Okay, I think well, any progress, accessory working on this, so that's in here.
Perfect. Perfect.
Do you accept it as a candidate?
Well done.
Oh, sorry.
Um, on, I am five. Let's add to that that the applicant, because in the day to day file, the zoning board is dealing with on the frontage requirement. Not even hesitant, go five.
Yes, sorry, Ian.
Can I change the wording a little bit? The applicant has filed with the Z B A for section six finding for the frontage.
Sure.
Want more, Steve?
No, that's it.
Second is amended.
Second. All okay?
Aye, aye.
Bye.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Down, so let it go.
No.
No.
We hold, we hold.
Change his mind.
So at six fifty, right on time, we have a site play where the grade one twenty four, four next steps we wrote. A farm is here replaced with accessories for natural lock, lock fifty through the attitude. Seven, the applicant owner and water.
How we doing?
Tell them what's going on.
Okay, so we have, uh, we're gonna build a new farm stand. It's gonna be sixty feet long, thirty six feet wide, with an eight foot porch on the front. It's, it's gonna be more modern, insulated, heating air conditioning, protect my produce in the summer when it's hot ninety degrees. Um, you know, there'll be a back room for working and packing tomatoes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
So, this is gonna be a feedback, really correct?
Yeah, it's a modern building, yeah. Uh, the pictures, you have the plans, the pictures are a lot nicer than what was there.
But what was there is gone.
What was there is gone, yeah.
It's been a while, how long this camp building? Old.
Well, it's probably, let's see. What my oldest son, crazy. He'll be twenty five years old. Yeah. Yeah.
I actually have a patient.
Oh, okay.
So I think the answer is.
Right.
Yeah, that's wrong.
Um. I'm gonna touch you with written policies, you know, the suggestion of.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm verifying anything else. Are there any questions, did you want on the board about what we decided to do?
Nothing more. Any change in required infrastructure there, water, power?
No. Uh, everything's, I mean, this, we have a transformer, top of the hill with a line that comes down, because we knew we were gonna do this eight years ago. Eventually, we didn't know when, where the power will come down and go into that building. So there's already a conduit in the ground. We did it eight years ago when we built the house, as we had to dig up the whole driveway. So they just have to run the power down and stick it in the building.
And that's the only utility, there's no water.
Um, no, there's no water. I mean, there's, I have an ice machine that gets water. That's it, there's no, there's no water, there's no plumbing in the building.
It's not.
Yeah, it's have an ice machine that produces ice, obviously. But that's it.
No sanitary facility, no.
No, it's just that, uh, no, not in the building. Up at my, up at my house, I have all that. I have everything I need up at my house. I have the bathroom for my house, I have washing and all the bathroom, etc.
I'm sorry, the ice machine is in the building?
It will be.
So where does that get water?
Uh, that will get, that will get, so I have outside the building, I have a hybrid. It will get the water from the hybrid and then at the end of the year, it'll, we'll just unconnect that hybrid, shut the hybrid up. The water's not in the building.
Is that, is that portable water?
Oh, yeah, it's town water.
Yeah. Town water.
You do already have an ice machine?
I do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've had an ice machine there for, yeah, so.
This is nothing new.
No.
No.
No, this is the way you can do it all along.
This is the way I've been doing it all along.
And you, and you still get to do it for a lot of the time.
Sure.
Well, well, yeah, I do get, yes, yes, I do. Yeah.
I don't have any questions, I mean, it's great.
No.
Your light?
No.
You put a light?
Nope.
All right, Mr. Sid, okay.
All right. Move that the planning board finds that the post site work in building work is minor in nature because there appears to be out of the parking units, parking lot, farm stand use and rental site work is proposed and rent site plant labor. We're gonna assign to remove the existing farm stand and replace it with a new efficient and important building with the following conditions. One, instructions shall comply with the improvements shown on a plan entirely of what plan to propose farm stand at one to four quarters distance road in situ with mass dated August twenty third, twenty twenty three, received by the planning board on January sixteenth, twenty twenty four by Ross Engineering Company and a subsidiary operating consulting LLC submitted with the application to approval is contingent upon all local approvals being obtained from the town of situat. Second.
Second.
So this can just wave the.
Are we discussed? Okay.
And no questions?
No, we're awesome.
Okay. Uh.
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Luck and hattler.
Yeah, but always pay it off on this decision, right?
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. I probably won't get this filed tomorrow because I have a couple sciences. I probably won't file.
Maybe you're taking vacation. Okay, that's fine.
I'd rather, I'd rather write the decision on your side, you know, inside.
I figured my name too, maybe.
Yeah.
Now, after that, I just, both the building department are giving eye permit, much like that.
After I write this up, I'll sign up on building permit and whoever else has to sign our whatever.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, have a good evening.
Sure. Or a few minutes early for us, seven, four, two minutes.
You might wanna do the minutes and the, um, county, not quick, and should take you only two minutes.
Okay. I will approve the requisition of one thousand three hundred fifty dollars in Merrill Corporation of Peer Review Services and Curtis Estates.
I'm.
Okay, second.
Or second.
Second, all right.
Okay, second.
All right.
All in big.
Aye.
Great.
I'm gonna get fired if this truck.
Very much. Okay, now we have meeting minutes. I'm over to approve the meeting minutes from January eleventh, twenty twenty four.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That took a minute and a half.
I thought you had eighty minutes.
Okay. What's proof of minutes? Okay, well, we just got a, did we get over here? I'm sorry.
Did we get over? Get over?
Yeah, I can tell you that, I think we had some.
You can talk at the house.
Lovely guy.
Good.
How many?
Not that. Still you're leaving.
I am.
I'm sorry.
You're bad. Very bad.
Well, I just.
If you need to pull something up on and share with us, I can do that.
Great, thank you. Perfect.
Please. Ready?
Yeah, two minutes, two minutes. So anyway, so I went to the newly provided, you made me, you have a story interested.
That's right.
And, um, um, there's two people on the, they wasn't for five to seven people, they only got two people. So I was here to try to invite a show of anybody, because they wanted people in, it didn't work, but, um, two interesting names, um, of like. Uh, you do the general bylaws, I don't know mainly, but they were like, that's only bylaws. So you kind of have to break them up, say you don't really have the right to review other. We have for a map with the one with select, I don't know, I, I think I did it every time I was with you. And so that's true, but, um, still, I want to give you recommendations that I can do for the charter. The positions that I've covered for charter, right? Uh, and I think we will move rather well, uh, to think government very, it's very well of course, so, so that's good. And that's our only answer, I did, if you want to go there, Tommy.
I really have gone to the, um, housing trust and another explanation of why they go into eight or nine countryway.
Okay.
More of what had been presented here. And that was that.
Got to get me for the bike committee.
Nothing that's worth reporting.
Okay, well, I think it's seven o'clock. And that being said, last month, um, continuing public hearing for site plan administration review and special permit for all margin family buildings and stormwater permit in the village center in North District, Will children village district, plus other jobs, so, we know this is gonna be long, so let's, a few rules on our rules. So, we're gonna hear from the advocate, then we're gonna hear Mr. Ellison, who is here, then we're gonna hear from the child later, and then we, the board will have questions, and then we'll open it up to the public, okay? And that's up. So, I thought like eight, wait, I see you can stick to it. Good evening, how are you tonight?
Good thanks, I'm very well.
Thank you.
Uh, just by way of introduction, on Bill Armberg, I'm here, and I have three owners, Chris Bruce, uh, Sean Stockbridge, and Kenny Sanchez, along with, uh, who I don't know, is Kevin Lady, our engineer, and Jamie Keller, our architect, just a brief, kind of procedural status since the last, uh, since the last meeting, yeah, I don't know if that will not, uh, it's been, and on site, it's probably somebody disappeared. Uh, our conservation, we had our conservation meeting, and basically, uh, pending closing this hearing, I'm ready to close out and vote your conditions. I saw that the board of health is all set from the aspect point on septic and title five issues. Uh, Kevin's gonna talk a little bit about his conversations with, uh, Paul Holle, building commissioner. On January sixteenth, we're with the design review committee, and I know Kevin and Karen were there, and I think they get pretty well also, although I don't think they issued their accommodations here. And that, that's about it, I'll respond in response to it, and I think Kevin wants to, uh, Jamie will, he's already gone through a design review thing, so he'll answer any questions, Kevin will show you, probably speak a little bit about, uh, what his conversation means, I mean, address Paul Holle's issues, and, uh, also, yeah, any of the issues, which I think were ninety-four, thirty-nine, seventy-seven or something in the last, uh, his last, so, so. Kevin wanted to turn around.
Sure. Thanks, Phil. Um, just to continue on the housekeeping, as that, uh, Phil had mentioned, we also obtained, submitted the water system review. Review indicated that there was adequate pressure and supply in the water system. Um, from the previous meeting, we made some plan, um, additions and edits. The, uh, you had asked for a fence plan to put out by with a, be more specific where the fence is, if what's shown on the sheets, probably created an separate plan to detail that, uh, we added snow storage plan. So, there's a couple of extra sheets. We added an additional dumpster, I mean, the existing building and building two and that parking lot. Uh, we added a note to, um, detail how we comply with the bike rack requirements on sheet one. So, yeah, and we also added a retaining wall plan, one of the final sheets, gives a profile of the retaining wall, basically the retaining wall for the most part is two and three feet, there's one area where it gets, um, close to seven feet, six and a half feet, in the parking lot, the south side, basically, because of the way we needed to configure that and push the stormwater to the system, we needed to gain elevation to push that, um, off of that parking lot. That's why that's, that elevation. Reduced the parking by two spaces, required to have fifty-three, we're down to sixty-one. Um, as I said, that gives you some flexibility with snow storage. T E C's comments we received last week on the eighteenth, the majority of which, um, T E C indicated that we, um, uh, that they were all set with the, with the comments, and there's, there were just a few understanding ones. Um, the few in the main body of T E C's review are a couple of elevations with the stormwater system that didn't match the stormwater calculations, um, probably two descriptors errors there, we can take care of those, no, no problem. The main part of T E C review was the last section, um, which was, uh, titled new comments, um, the first new comment, basically was that, actually, let me go back just a bit. One of the ones that was in the main body was also that the building inspector had issued a, uh, bullet points of issues that he'd like to be addressed. Um, so, I did take a look at those today, spoke with, uh, Paul Holle regarding what his, um, what his comments were, um, I can go through them real quickly, one was about sheet indexing, I went through there, I didn't really see anything, I changed the sheet labels to be exactly what was on the sheet index, they asked for north arrows, I didn't see any sheets that didn't have north arrows where they were necessary. Basically, we showed him on the plan, if there's any other sheets, this, uh, north arrows are, they're not needed, I make sense. Um, the main thing that he was concerned about was the accessible route. Um, we went, you know, we had a good discussion about it, and we went through it, and I think we've come up with a way where we can meet what he wants, um.
I'm meeting current, my particular wall was answered by E D A, quite exact, so.
Essentially, what he's saying is that, in his opinion, and his review of the, um, architectural, architectural access board, uh, five twenty-one C M R, is that the accessible route is supposed to follow the typical route of the routing of the site. Um, what we have for our accessible route is basically from the street around the rear here, uh, we complied with direct access, accessibility each building with um, accessible parking right in front of each of the buildings with direct access. The difficult part for the site is this stretch right here where it's, um, sloped at almost nine percent, and that's a, um, that's related to the geography of the site, as you know, where it goes up a hill and can't really flatten the whole site and still meet stormwater and have something, septic, and so, we'll kind of start with the grades, but we took a closer look at it, and what we can do is we can add railings to these sections of sidewalk and limit them to eighty-point-three percent at thirty-foot increments with landing areas every thirty feet, um, to make this an accessible route. Um, the other option was to eliminate this section and make everybody walk around, because then we'd make that section of the bylaw, but, um, I agreed to take a look at this, and I did take a look at it today, and it is feasible to do, so, but.
Can you explain how to?
Sure, um.
So, I'm not sure what you're doing.
So, let's go to this, um, the ready sheet. So, the architectural access board, um, requirements, basically say that you, that the highest, um, elevation change you can do, and any one ramp is thirty inches, at eight-point-three percent, one foot and twelve feet. So, um, in this section here, we're approximately eight and a half percent, so I'm gonna change the grade in this slightly and put a few landing areas in at thirty-foot increments, so if you're, you know, moving up the, uh, it's a fairly long run, it's a couple hundred feet, so you need to take breaks, every thirty feet, you need a flat area, so when I come up, you put a flat area, um, and then we're gonna gain that, then we're gonna get up to this, to the street, add a crosswalk. Um, we also need to add ram, so if you have a ram, you need to have railings, so we need to add railings on these areas, needs to be a four-foot clear path between the two railings, so we'll widen those walkways to four and a half feet, make sure the railings are not closer than four feet between. Same thing here, we're gonna have, um, a landing at thirty feet, and we're able to get up to thirty-two-point-six, which is this landing area here below these steps for access for, um, able pedestrians. Um, and then we're, we're just gonna elongate this section a little bit with, uh, railings as well, again, thirty feet is the max rise and run. Took a look at it today, obviously, we're taking some minutes today. But I think we're just about there, and I can review that with, uh, Mr. Holle, he's happy with the discussion.
I think we've got something in writing from him, please, and after you, after you get something that's acceptable, that he thinks is acceptable, maybe something in writing.
Sure.
Is that all independent statement, Mr. Chase?
Hopefully, I mean, uh, uh, hold on, let me just make sure. Couple of the items in the, in the new comments section, um, um, Mr. Ellison suggested that we look at relocating the water main from the north property line to the, uh, within the driveway. I think that's feasible, uh, I took a look at that today, we may just need to move the septic tank, we need a ten-foot step back. Um, I didn't have time to, to get to that, and I can't submit the plans today anyway, so, but I did look at it, I don't think it's gonna be an issue. Um, and actually, it probably benefits the developer, it shortens the run. So, I think we can do that, before, we had a lot of, uh, utilities and septic and, uh, moving parts within that roadwork layout, so it wasn't looking like we could get it up there. The second comment, new comments, was about the discharge pipe at the north, uh, east corner. There was an existing pipe that going, goes to catch basin in this northeast corner that Mr. Ellison is suggesting we may wanna, uh, connect to. And we would be happy to do that, that would be my preference as well, I'd rather not discharge to the ground and have it over overland, but we do need D P W permission to, to access that with the, uh, the, um, stormwater requirements for a private, um, property to, or connect to town stormwater system, it's already connected, um, that's where the drainage is now. So, would like to do that, we just need to make sure that it's something that is approvable from the town. If it's not, we can discharge to the ground, um, stormwater currently flows from the site overland to the street, and also overland from the grass to that catch basin. So, there's already stormwater going there. And I don't.
Be the same volume.
Less. Yeah.
So, you're gonna pursue that with D P W?
Yes, if they won't, they can't approve it, then we have to stick with discharge into the surface, but we're happy to, to pursue that. But.
I have to have a good question.
Yes, please do.
Why? And again, unless, unless, unless miracle, it's a nonstarter, all over the entire town, it's a good, people don't want them. Uh, I can't remember any situation where, uh, where there was a, where there was a, you know, where there was a, a manhole, where, except that the D P W doesn't let anyone tie in. All, all the tie-ins, it's probably thousands of them in the county, they're all done without permission, so what I recommend to Kevin is, I, I, I think you're just chasing a phantom, is, the bottom line is, if in the conditions of approval, we want to say, if the D P W approves the connection from, from our outflow pipe to the discharge pipe, uh, that will do it, but if they don't, it stays where it is. So, uh, stormwater is a better condition than in this present, but you could spend the next three months trying to pursue that and, and never get an answer, it's a different standard, you can, you can flow over, anyone can flow any, any amount into stormwater, once you start tap into it, it's a, it's, it's a whole different set of issues, and so, if it's something that, uh, you know, on, on an equitable basis, it makes sense, but you can't, you know, that would be my suggestion, I just think, you'd be sitting here two months from now, wondering what you, what, what you're doing, and the bottom line is, it's improved stormwater situation that permanently exists.
Well, I mean, D P W has let some people tie in, so, I mean, I'm specialized circumstances, so, I would think you'd ask that at least.
Yes, we can, we can ask, sure.
Sure, we, we have a solution either ways.
Yeah.
So, we should ask.
I, I would say that, uh, anyone can't dump any amount of stormwater into the catch basin. Your current conditions are you're limiting back, or?
Yes.
If you're dumping less than that now, then that should be sufficient.
Yes, and in this case, it's treated now.
So, the, the, the notion of making a hard fight connection to it, I think, I, I tend to agree, I think you know, if that's gonna cause you to chase your tail for a while, I just, I would just eliminate it. As long as you're managing stormwater ways, but.
Yeah, we can make a query, I sound, sounds good.
Um, the next item was the playground structure and gazebo proposed on S D eight-one, um, I've relocated the gazebo already on the plans that you haven't received yet, the place structure isn't anything that's gonna have a major foundation, it's not something you can find at a preschool or Y M C A or anything, so I don't think that needs a foundation, it's something that can sit on the ground and won't have any adverse impacts. Um, commented on snow storage, um, snow storage was covering approximately twenty spots, and made it dirty, and they put it in a, in a spot with a fire truck, it created a conflict with the fire truck, I moved it. Um, if, at any point, there's too much snow and there's not enough parking, we'll need to come off the side. Peter also asked for us to revisit the dry sewer connection, I can do that, we, we'll, we'll add that, it's pretty simple. Um, there was a, uh, type oh-one erosion control plan where we left, uh, reference to buildings two, three, and four, we only now have buildings two and three, so I revised that. Um, and then there's a comment about, um, providing construction sequence, construction sequence I put on sheet twenty-five. I think the construction sequence is more of a, uh, construction base item, it's hard to sequence something that you don't know what you have yet. So, I made the best effort, um, if we need a construction sequence, once we know we have, I, I can update it. I, I would like to get with the contractor who's gonna build it, and actually have a conversation about it. Uh, so it's kind of difficult to do it at this phase, I did prepare one, and it, it makes sense, it might not be perfect.
Well, I think you have to be able to address in the construction sequence, are the people remaining in building one?
Yes.
So, where are they gonna be parking, because you've, you've got a parking lot that you're trying to build, how are the people in building one gonna be parking? Usually contractors will fence off the area, and so that's what, we really wanna see how that's gonna be done.
And then. That is on the plan. That's on the plan, and, and they're gonna park in, uh, the, I suggested that they build parking lot two. I suggested they build this parking lot first, and these stairs, and then they work on half the road here, and then the other half of the street, it's gonna be tight, it's just like any traffic, um, situation that you have, uh, on a public way, but it is feasible where they can construct this first, um, at, at least to, um, compacted gravel, and they can access the building in this location. So, construct this first, I suggested, suggested a fence, construction fence here so they can utilize the, uh, area to the north side, and you can kind of separate this section. I forget what sheet it, it's on the erosion control sheet.
And that's gonna be in the revised set of plans, where you specified that out?
Yes, I, I believe it's on this set of plans already, I can.
All right, I didn't really see it, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of sheets, so.
Um, yeah, I read every one of them. Yeah, I read every one of them.
I believe it.
So, before you leave there, so you're gonna build that lot first?
Yes.
So where do, where do people park all that stuff going on there?
So they would leave the existing parking here, right? Leave all this intact, the entrance and the parking that they use now that's here.
Yeah. And how do, how does the construction get access to that area they're starting on?
They're gonna use the driveways there.
Okay. So you're gonna, you're gonna sort of block that all off?
Yes.
Okay.
And then when we actually come back to redo this entrance, then we have to have it on.
Okay.
How are you redoing the entrance?
Um, well, it's basically a grid already, but we're gonna cut out the old driveway, um, put in the stormwater infrastructure and then, and uh any other utilities and now moving the water over to here. The drive sewer, so we'll get that in. And you know, we're gonna have, like I said, we're gonna work on this half first so that they can access this parking lot and then not do the other half next.
Is there any way that the entrance to that driveway can be moved even more so to the north? Put that in the base for now.
Okay.
Mr. Ellison, are you here with us, please?
Hello, good evening.
Hi, this is all, sure, you want to hear from me, Mr. Ellison, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you. Um, for the record, my name's Peter Ellison, I'm a civil engineer with TEC and we're the peer review agent for the planning board. I largely agree with, with Kevin's summary of, of my latest letter. We've gotten through most of the really technical stormwater comments at this phase. Um, this latest set of plans was a significant improvement and um I would, I would say that most of the technical comments related to the, to the stormwater and the civil site design have been addressed. There are some outstanding items that Kevin already walked you all through. One thing that I heard Kevin discuss was related to the construction sequencing plan and I guess a question for the board and for Karen, um, is it, is it typical to, as a condition of approval request that a detailed sequence be submitted like prior to the start of construction? Could that, would that be something that would make the board feel more comfortable and, and um, like Kevin said, a lot of times it's hard to know what the sequence will be for the construction of a project until you do have a contractor on board who is gonna be doing the work.
Um, well, a lot of times we've asked for it prior to approval. Fifty Country Way, we asked for it prior to approval. I mean, that's up to the board. If, if you, if you're happy with how the sequence is written now and you wanna condition that, we can condition that.
I would say the condition, the sequencing is presented. If somebody proposed modified, then they have to come back to, at least to the town planner, propose that modification. I think, you know, one of the, one of the other reasons for construction sequencing is to be assured that you're gonna build out the whole site, you're not gonna build two of the three buildings or whatever it is, you know? And I assume here that your intent is to build the whole site. Not to build one and then wait for six months or a year or whatever, build the next thing. Is that correct?
I think we would have come in with a small project if that was the case. I can't talk about what they have in funds that could, you know, jeopardize that, I don't know what's happening in the economy, but we would have committed just the one building and not gone for the special permit and all that if our intention was just to keep one.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
We've had, you can do it the other way.
Yep, understood.
Mr. Ellison?
Okay, great, yeah, and um, you know, I think, I think there's, it sounds like there's a plan in place to address some of the, the bigger open-ended items like the um comments from the building commissioner related to accessible access to the buildings. Relocation of the water main, the discharge point of the drainage. It's, it sounds like there's, there's a plan in place um to address those issues and, and based on Kevin's description, I think it, it would be adequate. That's really all I had in my letter, is does the board have any questions related to the civil site items?
Well, for me. Again, yes. I, I'm concerned about the entrance from Country Way. And I was wondering if there is any way to make make it wider, so the curve goes more to the north, where the entrances to make it wider, that it's just, there are concerns about site distances and when I look at the plan, they've got trees and all of this stuff that make it fair, it's a difficult situation.
Agreed, yeah, and I think um it's something that my traffic team has expressed a lot of concern over from, you know, our first review. Um, I know that recently the applicant went out and, and did some clearing um at the driveway to try and improve those sightlines. From what I've heard from my traffic team, it, it doesn't look like that is adequate to address the issue.
It isn't.
So yeah, that, that is definitely a concern going forward.
Right, thank you. Alright, so maybe this is time that we should start talking about traffic. I, I had, I had a conversation with Kevin Dondrade, um, traffic engineer um at TEC and removing the ivy from the wall is not gonna be sufficient to cover the site distance. There's still a site distance issue in our consulting engineer's opinion. Okay, that's, that's his opinion. I know that Scott Thornton had asked to talk to Kevin and that conversation as of today has not taken place. But they have talked and it was given, that was given permission to happen. But, you know, there, there is two things that we need, well, there's many, many things we consider. First of all, planning board has to find that there's safe site distance, and I'm not sure that you can find that now. Um, Kevin did suggest that if all the other requirements are met, the planning board could request that VAI provide a stamp certification that all traffic criteria are met and confirmed.
When was this? You haven't received that, we may have been able to view that.
I, I just had a conversation yesterday with them. And I, I'm trying to work on resolving issues for, for this project. And so we had a conversation yesterday, because I've been trying to follow up. Once I gave permission for the conversation to happen and it hasn't happened, I'm trying to find out where, where we are, but as it stands right now, we have a problem with the site distance. Okay, so that, that's, that's an issue. And it's not going away tonight. I would hope the tra, the two traffic engineers could get together and talk, but Kevin suggested that one thing that might be able to do is that VAA might provide us stamp certification. We're still, we're still in discrepancy of where we're taking the site distance. You know, Ashto says fourteen feet. You know, they're saying it meets it at nine feet, so it's not quite the same, but I think we have to let the traffic engineers try to work that out.
Yeah, and uh Scott Thornton with, asked Karen if I could jump in. And, you know, Kevin and I had, I, we'd just been playing phone tag, I know he was out last week, he called me yesterday or uh I think it was yesterday and I just didn't get a chance to get back to him, but you know, I, I think that um, the, the goal of the conversation was just, would be to, to just clarify uh, his impression of, of site distance, because I, I think that you know, there's, there's some conflation of, of a couple of the different site distance criteria and, and we just need to uh, we just need to work it out. Um, I think what he's, what he's referencing is, is not uh the, the strict definition of the minimum requirement for, which is for stopping site distance. I think that the, the measuring point that he's using is, is not appropriate, but again, I, you know what? I, that's something that he and I need to work out.
Yeah, yeah, right, you guys need to work it out and if you can provide me some type of stamp certification, then that's what the board um, is, should be looking for at this point in time. Try to work the issue and then we'll, we'll, we'll go from there, but you know, what my guy says, he, you know, he was pretty certain that there's an issue.
Yeah, I would also say that uh it's nice to have a piece of paper, but if there's a concern about adequate site distances, then we have to resolve that. If, if there's an issue that this is not safe, that that has to be resolved. I mean, it's fine for somebody to write a piece of paper, but if he still has different opinion as to whether it's resolved or not. And I think it has to get physically resolved. I see, you can physically
Agree with you, I agree with that.
And all of that.
To that point, we, we met on site that night and all of us pulled in and out of there, I didn't see anybody struggle to exit.
But it's not the criteria, right? That's anecdotal, right? I want this addressed, you know, why it should be addressed, right, so.
Yes, we still want to go.
Yeah, just on, on that point, uh, one of the things that would ask at that site meeting, which I was in that, is, and the board has asked that previously, is, well, the property to the, to be a south of our state, you know, what can they do with the wall, can they move the wall or whatever? Question's been asked and answered and uh Attorney Walter Stoller, who I think informed, is gonna be with you folks soon on this, on this project for the persons with disabilities directly to us, so. Uh, he told me specifically, and he'll speed it more to it to the board, is that no, they cannot move the wall because in, in his words, uh, the wall was for a controlled environment that's necessary with residents with disabilities and for their therapeutic process. And so the bottom line is, under, under no terms are they gonna move that wall. It's because they can't, because it is, it's a disability. So I just telling you that in, at the last time, as the attorney fell was closely at that informal meeting, it wasn't, and I don't know if that was clearly conveyed by the property, but uh, that's what always with that situation.
We will take that on revision, we, we're aware of that conversation. Mr. Ellison, are you all set?
I am, yes.
Look, so I think we have more to talk about with traffic. Because you, not only you have to find site distance is acceptable, you also have to find that pedestrian circulation is acceptable. And it's, you know, we've received a couple of comments in, you know, uh, in the mail today, email, that say that the bus service does not go down to, goes, doesn't go down Country Way anymore because it doesn't go, it can't go over the Mordecai Lincoln Bridge because the bridge can't support the traffic. And so, right, so all the people, all the people, the kids have to walk down to get, to get a road to catch the bus. So our traffic engineer previously identified that there was an issue with pedestrian circulation as well. And this does not require a special permit, but yet we have to have safe pedestrian access. Um, it's, the bylaw points to this in several locations. Um, it may be that we have to condition implementation of a sidewalk connection on Country Way in the right of way with easements as necessary to facilitate a connection to the existing sidewalk on the south side of Lincoln Park, approximately six hundred linear feet. In the event of proposed improvements are outside of the right of way, the applicant should work with DPW and the town to advance a public project funded by the applicant. That may be one solution. Another solution may be to have an off-road solution and try to go through Lincoln Park. But pedestrian accommodations should be made, these people who are going to be living in this development need to be able to safely get to wherever.
So this is something that we, Scott, my clients and Kevin really wanna talk about, because this is just terribly prejudicial and terribly unfair. Uh, is the board aware from, because I was stupefied today, as to receive a memorandum that, that went to you on September twenty-nine, twenty-eighth, that has never been revealed to us. Have you, have you seen it?
No, just to say.
It's absurd, I mean, it is absurd that we're getting this, but uh, let me just read you, considering that there's been a November ninth meeting, there's been an onsite in the day of the hearing as an attachment, this is central. But among other things, and this is from Kevin Durande, it said, uh, he, he basically said, I would not have any capacity to turn this traffic vehicles, talk about Mordecai Lincoln Road. I would, I would expect the roadway to be impacted by fewer than five vehicle probably given the limit of existing traffic bunch of Country Way and the good levels of service to key intersections. It would be difficult to pinpoint a traffic-related mitigation measure that we could reasonably recommend to the applicant to tackle. However, it may be appropriate to consider a fair share cost assessment. If you know, if you know, so again, presumably it's addressed to, it's addressed to the planner, if a public transportation project is very close to the site and if we could rationally tie the impact to this development, that is bullshit. And thirty ideas, I've, I've never seen anything and it goes on, but to have something for four months and not reveal what is, is so damn prejudicial.
The reason why it was given today was to address the comments on Mordecai Lincoln. Our traffic engineer does not think there's an issue with the traffic on Mordecai Lincoln. As, so he's finding that the, the, the VAI report on Mordecai Lincoln is fine. It's, he's saying that there's not gonna be an increase in traffic on Mordecai Lincoln.
That, that's not the point, the point, the point is he's have the board never seen this?
Yes, nothing yet.
Oh, okay, so everyone, everyone's had it, but, but except for us or engineers, or it's never been talked about, we're consultants. I've never encountered anything like this in life, and then to say what in the name of Christ in the bylaw is, is, we're gonna try to rationally tie the impact to the developer when the first three sentences says, you can't. So a, a, and then, and then to have here fair share cost assessment, what, what is this? Because the town has been neglectful and, and I, and I have feelings for all the residents that a bridge isn't, a bridge isn't maintained properly or things like this. We had, we had all kinds of things we were gonna do and we were told ardently by everyone, drop the density bonus, get rid of these things. Uh, we don't, what, it isn't the priority to follow the criteria of the bylaw on the size of the buildings or whatever. And but to have something for four months and then to came today and tell us it's a problem.
And Mr. Aubrey, as you know, if you've been doing this for a long time, we should want a fighting decision, things public to the surface. So like how
That's for four months.
So we have identified that the sidewalk has been a problem since day one. We have talked about this and us, we all know, that we know that pedestrian circulation is going to be an issue. I didn't know until yesterday that the school bus didn't go here, this is not an over fifty-five community which we actively do not want to have. So if there are children being here, our first priority is to the health and safety of our population. So here is our issue with the sidewalk, I personally think that every building should have a sidewalk in front of it. There's no doubt about it, you cannot walk out of that site, take a ride and then jump on a, a make-believe sidewalk, go come a hundred feet, then jump into the street, then jump on the town sidewalk. So we have talked about what we don't require mitigation um, because you, you're just sizing your property. Um, I think that you owe it to the residents of your building that they have a safe access to where they wanna go. And can you agree or disagree?
And can you agree or disagree?
I agree with you wholeheartedly. And also too, as Mr. Orin Herbert had mentioned, Walter Sullivan. And that project will be coming forward to the county at some point for these individuals that need adequate access, pedestrian access to the train. Now, this is something, who is to say that the MBTA should not have continued the sidewalk that Lincoln didn't? There are other things that have happened in the past, but that's the past. We have to go for we need a sidewalk that extends, I don't care about the the wall at country at um South Main Street, but we do need a sidewalk that goes from the cohesive line to the train station. We have to have it, and we have to figure out the highest and best way to do it. It's a public safety situation. And I know, because I'm on traffic rules, I know that the bus and the fire department cannot go up Mordecai Lincoln. I know that the neighbors up there are very upset because they did have a sidewalk once upon a time, and that was taken away, and a white line was put up supposedly for a cycle. There are issues in North City that go way beyond no sewer. There are things that need to be dealt with. You want to put in this fix one bill, this large project, and I know that we can't demand that you put in a sidewalk. But I would suggest to you that it is in your best interest for the people that will live there as well as your neighbors to please do this.
Kevin, I answer your question. Is has this uh i- is part of the review and everything, has this been designed so that a bus can turn around on our side?
Yes, bus and a and fire emergency apparatus can turn around at the site.
Right, so you don't, that the as far as I know, if bus routes change every year, well, at least that's that's how it was for the seventeen years I did school when my grandkids.
So that means that we don't, you will not put in a sidewalk because you guys.
That's what he said.
That's how I interpreted it.
No, 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 but the implication is, I'd ask Kevin Jamie there, have you designed this project with the hundreds of thousands of projects for the safety of the residents that are going to live there? Because what just said to us is, we could look at that because we have some doubts about it.
We all know that the reason it's there is because there's a train station down the street and hope people get along. That's really what it is. And it's not safe to walk. There's tons of places in city that it's not safe to walk, but that happens.
Yeah, but 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 what's happening here, you're pinning on one person because they're the first people to do this, you kind of ten million dollars in mitigation money, they used two and a half million to buy tier forty-four. There's hundreds of things they could have done. They built a dry soil line under the soil under under the thing. There's all kinds of things that this board or anyone else then would control. So to say now, hey, uh, the town didn't negotiate this the way they should have. The town didn't maintain this the way they should have over a period of time, but we want you to you want we want you to fix this because you're going to build twenty-six.
Let's stop this. Let's stop this. Let's talk about, well, let's settle the capital level a little bit. Let's talk about making an agreement where more than one person can come to the table and make a decision like you do in Green Bush, if you do on Stockbridge, in countryway, where either you make some kind of a decision in our fact-finding now, either X amount of dollars gets put into there, we're talking DPW, you know, this is a burgeoning community. You know, we've done this in Green Bush, and you're going to witness what happened the way, so you know how that goes, right? So what is it like? You have to be a hundred percent because we're trying to get to a a a collective point that we could all agree that you mustn't really be a sidewalk. Can we at least agree that there should be a sidewalk here? No? No, 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 no sidewalk?
In front of you, Billy, no sidewalk?
Yeah, listen, Kevin said, I to ask people to do things on other people's property, such as, well, let's see if that let's see if the town is situated, if we could do if we could do something over the thing. We were will for Lincoln Park, we wanted to do a lot of things, but everything fell on deaf ear. No one cared. And we've been through so many, we've been through so many iterations of this. We dropped a special permit so so that we could get going knowingly that the we dropped our density bonus because everyone was uh from the neighbors to the founder, everyone was against us. So we've we've stripped out any theoretical ability to pay for these things. And the the point I'm getting to is being read is the other thing is we get grow beaten on a proper basis. I agree if people don't file things on a timely basis. But we're expected to react to or or engage in a never-ending process because other blind held who have standards, well, let's make an opinion today. Let's let's get letters, let's get this. Well, someone said today that that there is a problem with the buses. And and they may well be, but but what, we're supposed to delay this now and not build because someone dropped something?
We're not saying that. We're not saying that. Like, 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 all the crazy about this, what we're saying.
No, no, they're not. I do get crazy when someone's had something for four months that costs a lot of money, and your own consultant basically says, you meet the criteria. There isn't rational basis to do this, but let's try this, let's try to stick one up.
No, no, and I think you're being a little over dramatic. Mr. Orin, what we're asking you is that you're building a building that has X amount of units that have got to house people. If you go to the front of your property, there is no safe place for those people to go except into the middle of countryway. Now, I know that the people next door to you for sale project are also going to have to talk about a sidewalk. So this is a place to let's get together with DPW and you and try to figure out a rational way to get the residents of eight seventeen to the train station, which is to go at the end of the day, no?
Obviously, everyone wants safety, but what I'm saying, let's let's not, let's not, you know, that's a Dover amendment project. You can't put any conditions on it.
Again, we certainly put some things on a Dover amendment project. We've got to be full of.
No, but this is all.
Okay, we're talking about goodwill here, so can we talk about a little goodwill as well?
Tell us what the goodwill costs. Because because they just dumped, they they just dumped twenty units, twenty-five units, because no one wanted the aesthetics.
But nobody ever said that we didn't want to walk to North City. So really, let's take this rationally. I understand it's all about the dollars and cents at the end of the day, which has nothing to do with this board. Our facility, our uses to make sure that people can get around properly. Now, I didn't know about the buses either. How would I know about buses not being able to go much farther? I have no idea. I think it's all we have to work on in a while to sign. Yes, why did you get the buses? That anybody in Mordecai Lincoln, when you get the bus.
And where Jamie's used to.
Where Jamie's used to be, okay, so they came up and down there in Mordecai Lincoln because she could walk there and because it's too private, yeah. We're just looking for a rational decision. We could all work together and try to come to some fair mind is making how we should get your residents and residents next door and anybody else. I don't think that anybody is asking you to shoulder one hundred percent of the cost, are we? No.
But again, you quantify stuff. If you if you said, what's the dollar number of contribution? That's something you can talk about. We we've already offered when we had a special permit, all kinds of. And I agree with Ian a hundred percent on that this has to be looked at and has been so. Obviously, no one wants to build an unsafe situation. But it's an existing, it's an existing site, an existing curb cut. Uh, countryway is the oldest one, if not the oldest road in the col- in the colony. The county, so there's all kinds of things, but what I'm saying is you have a three hundred and fifty-year-old road, and to say to to one group of people, well, you're going to fix all these problems.
Why, I know I'm saying that.
And we did talk about it a little bit uh last meeting where the pavement isn't in the middle of the road. It's it's skewed over. People are parked in the right of way across the street. There's a lot of issues with building a sidewalk.
And these are all things that we can consider.
And they all they all.
We know that. We know that. We're aware of it. Okay, can we just at some point come to circumstances and we can in some instance, we could really disagree, but we have to go forward somehow, some way. Are we all going to be happy? No. Are we all going to be pleased? No. Let's do the best that we can with what we have to work with. We all have to give a little to get a little. So we take it all under advisement.
And I have to taking it under advisement. I have sent an email today to the town administrator and DPW saying, I'd really like to sit down and get together with them and talk about a side the sidewalk on countryway. So I I did that. I'm just bringing this up tonight, and as you have to find that there's adequate, you have to safety inadequacy, driveway layout, pedestrian safety, off-street parking. So we can drop that issue for tonight and you know, let the traffic engineers work on some of the other stuff and go through the rest of the issues.
Sounds like a fair. So you know, we're not going to be solved next evening.
How do we, you know, from the developers' perspective, we just tabled it again, it's going to put the project down the road again on it. We've been on this project for, you know, a solid year and the longer it goes on without some, you know, it's going to cost some more money, yeah. So who makes the first offer here? What is the offer? Because we have, we we're sailing without a sail here. You know.
And you want twenty grand, you want fifty grand. What's a contribution? If you quantify a number, that's something that they can figure out.
So my job is to get that.
So so we've had the concern for a year, but no, no one's asked what.
Well, you know what? We took the priorities first. The priorities first was, you know, the budget seemed too dense. I think the board is pretty satisfied with the density right now. So now we're trying to, as as you start to write a decision, you start to look at all the other issues. And we're trying to look at all the other issues and bring them up now and get them resolved. So I'll move on. I had a discussion today with town council. Town council opines that a special permit or a section six is needed for the existing length of building one. I would highly think that the board will grant the special permit, and I would think that it's the shorter process because we've already advertised for a special permit that we just put it in our decision that the board would grant a special permit for for building one for the length to be over a hundred feet. Yep.
So I'm I'm just, guys, this is uh an area that I just don't know because one, that's the first time I was involved. Before on November ninth meeting, our zoning enforcement office, if we know that, if everyone knows who that is, opined that we did not need.
We did not need one. We had a conversation today with town council, and that is to be a later this way, that you clearly told us you can either you can either grant you a special permit or you can go for section six. We're telling you, you told us it's better be just to take it as part of our decision that you're going to get a special permit.
Or get it something in writing.
Get it something from the building commissioner, then it's.
Not session till ten.
He's already said the letter. I'll have him send a second one.
No, I don't.
No.
I don't have that one.
You already have an email that says that.
I do not.
I'll dig out one. So well, let's let's just get clear because now town council, these are all, so the town center council written a written opinion about this?
No, we just had a conversation with him this afternoon.
All right, so I don't know. So I don't know what's left. At a prior meeting, to whatever our prior meeting was, November nine, the question was asked. I went and and answered it, and it was in the building commissioner or behind that, and I believe he put it in right. So what you're telling me now is that even though the person who statutorily makes the zoning decisions, that even if he agrees to that, that's not good enough to this board. That because town council, the new town council somehow uh.
You know, if I may, there are some issues here, Mr. Orin Herbert. Let it go. You're going to get what you want. There is no point in going any further. Who said what or where about the section six funding, whether Bob Ogle did it correctly or did you, at this moment in time, is immaterial. Let it go right now. That's it. We're done.
So I'll let it go, but.
But enough.
You can't respond to anecdotal things, just as Steve pointed out on on the other thing. Can't expect, you can't respond, so we're we're in, again, an area where there's no, there's no way to respond.
So let's let's so so let's let's make it, we were packed above all of us, everything that said we want, but we want a paper trail for everything. Now, no one talking to somebody and say, he said, she said, everything in writing, we're that the hard way, we're going to do that.
That's really what we do. We have to do.
I've never seen anything Mr. Bob Ogle tell us it was okay at all, and I see all of that correspondence and, you know, I no, we don't do that. So, okay, go ahead, Karen.
All right, so design review committee has not given us their recommendations. Uh, when we met with the design review committee, uh, the proponents are proposing to use vinyl siding materials. Um, and um, we will hopefully get the design review letter very shortly.
So alls I do remember from that meeting is if this company, let's say this company in.
Certain due.
That you use the whole package, not to choose, but that conversation. And they know the conditions.
We're waiting on a.
We are waiting on every renovation. They they kind of misunderstood the time of the meeting and so, um, you know. Um, as I'm fine tuning and starting to write a decision, I come across a number of things. Um, the grading, the clearing, the impervious area, are they all the same? Knowing that the site plan has changed, I need the current numbers. We need where the affordable units are located and who will be the monitoring agent. I assume that you're going to want a waiver for submitting the cost eligibility and other compliance things till after you get approved. I mean, that's that's right. It's right in the zoning bylaw. The rare setbacks on sheet two in the table do not match. The outdoor amenity space on the plan does not match the table. Um, it's just I have to make findings about how the buildings are modulated and articulated with overhangs and cornices and that kind of stuff. And it's a little non-architect, so that gets a little confusing. I'm going to assume low reflectivity glass is proposed for building three. Um, I don't see the roof pitches for building two. Um, the park, the handicap parking at the front of the building, um, existing building one, it's supposed to be a minimum of five feet behind the building. Um, if if it's if building one is the primary building. Um, in the past, you've asked for E V charging stations. Do you want E V charging stations on this project?
Yes.
Is there a number?
Is there a number?
Is there a, is there a, is there a formula in the zoning bylaw I would have followed? Do I come up with that?
There is not a formula.
Just random, just guess and we'll come back a few times and discussing.
Not allowed.
Yeah, what he said.
Everyone get one.
And make sure they have the whiteboard, like, what that will be.
Make sure that they're heated.
Anything else, Karen?
Kevin, make sure the turnaround of the bus, unless it's an E V bus, it's not allowed to turn around. We have made that noise.
No smack, yes, okay.
Uh, no, that's all I have for now. That's I have enough that far.
I hope for the writing and writing. We've had a lot to say. You got anything else? So now I'm going to open this up to the public. Please keep your comments tight, thoughtful, and try not to repeat each other. Wait, stay there. Everybody in the room first. Yeah, please state your name and your address, please.
Yes, hi, Kathy DeShurdi. We're twenty-nine South Main Street, people peace them. And we live in a single-family home, which is a good property. Um, I did have just a couple of comments and very intense evening. Um.
If you mind just speaking up, like, it's kind of loud back here.
Yes, sorry. Um, I wanted to make a comment about that basin, and I made this to the conservation committee, and they said, oh, there's a basin in the east corner, northeast corner, um, in the road. Um, I mentioned to the conservation commission that that basin, uh, when it rains and there's a storm, then it's really very effective and does not really capture the water coming down the street um, from the site, from other sites, and it's not just this site. Um, and it comes right to the basin in front of our house. So that's a pretty active basin because that basin is not great. It's not, it's not sited properly. I don't know. There's something that can be done here about that. Probably would be really great if they could, you know, as was suggested, um, yeah, the DPW to agree to put right into that basin. Maybe that would stop some of that extra water coming down the street. Um, I also wanted to comment that it might not be that hard to do up the street. Maybe about a few properties up, there's someone else, it's like you can see their rain, it goes. There's someone else, it's like, you can see their drain goes right into the storm drain there. So, perhaps DPW's allowed that, will continue to allow that in this area, so hope of that.
Can I ask you if that's in Bohasa or Situate?
No, that's in Situate, North Situate.
Okay, just asking.
Um, I can't, I don't know.
It's okay, I should just plug it in.
So the property's in Bohasa, the storm drains in front of their property.
Yeah, there's a, so, and so, yeah, North Situate, right down the train, so there's one at the road, one in front of this property, eight one seven, and there's one in front of our property, four two.
We know that that's in fact.
And so, really, and a lot of stuff comes to our drains, it's a fun for us. Um, I also wanted to ask about the snow removal and how a garbage truck is going to get into that east parking lot. Are they going to be backing in, is there returning analysis that's been conducted in connection with that? Um, you know, uh, you know, they're going to be using either the main driveway and going, it seems to me that they're just going to have to back. And I just really can't understand how a snow plow is going to move the snow to particular areas, at least in that particular lot. How it's going to move it to those, half of that lot is, by the way, designated for snow removal and piling. So, how is that a plow and a maneuver in there? I really don't know. Um, same with the south lot, there's a snow plow, and that's the one that's right above, uh, Asia, eight oh nine, countryway. And, uh, you know, there's like a six percent of the wall there, and a lot of the snow at the end there. Um, and I just don't know, uh, how that the snow plows could look around in there, cars run there. You know, I mean, and also...
But that's an actual way, that, that would be a direct, oldest problem, and they don't use big town trucks, that would be a small pickup truck, so we wouldn't slow it there like him.
Well, Mr.-
But, yeah, unless it's a large storm, then you get a front end loader.
Yeah, and then they would move the snow.
Okay, Mr. Ellison previously had a turn analysis, you know, app for turn analysis, and applicants do that, and they did do that. Um, so I hope that that can be done with these extra lots, given the new volume of activity in those lots for snow plows and garbage trucks, or at least in the east lot. Okay, so, um, that's, uh, you know, uh, we're very happy about if the water mains moves, we're really happy, you know, that the applicant is, um, looking into that, knowing to do that. Um, because we, you know, mentioned numerous time concerns with the, uh, water main being poured from, from, from the property line that goes, uh, and then it also stopped. Um, I wonder what is now going to happen with, in connection with the walkway on the northern end of the property that's currently designated as the ADA walkway, will that still be there, will it not be there? Uh, it's really close to our property line, I just can't understand more than that. Uh, I mean, I think that's some of this bill check that now, you know, Molly, I appreciate your... And if that walkway is going to remain on that northern end, the one that's designated right now as the ADA walkway, I, we'd like to understand if there's going to be any lights on that walkway, because the lighting plan isn't showing right now. So, um, there's, you know, it shows where the lights will be, but there's absolutely not on the walkway that I would see, and maybe I'm missing somehow. But, um, you know, we'd like that addressed and we'll note that there's going to be this spillover as a result of any lighting that might come later. Um...
Kevin, how did you already address that?
That was already discussed.
Yeah, there's ball, there's baller lights along there, and then there's also a six foot fence, the ball lights are three feet high, so there won't be any spillover. And on, on that ADA walkway, we're likely eliminating that ramp that's in the northeast corner, if we're going to have the accessible road go up the, up the street. We're going to leave the walkway, uh, we're going to leave the walkway getting to the parking lot between the buildings, um, and the stairs, but it's no longer going to be accessible access.
So we have another, we have another set of plans coming to us for the new walkway.
Yes, no, no, that's great, I mean, I'm just trying to get it out now, so it's, it's there. And, uh, so let's see, um... Uh, and of course, we're, you know, we've been, yeah, discussing safety, um, around the area, and walkability and all of that. I mean, we want a limited, but that's safe and comfortable, we want to drive down our street, not worried about cars pulling out in front of us and all of that. You know, we appreciate your efforts in that regard, and Mr. Ellison's efforts in that regard, and identifying issues. And, um, so, I guess that's all I have to say right now, thank you very much.
Nice to start with.
Yeah, ju- just for clarification, excuse me, unless I'm hearing it wrong, saying flower moon trip. I thought the procedure was that if any, any, any neighbor of Butter had a concern, they submitted it to the board, the planner and the board considered this. If it's something that they wanted us to address, then they would ask their consultant. So is the new policy, do we follow the board's direction, or every time and Butter asks something that we don't know whether the board or someone else does, how, how do you know to respond, because the scope of what we're supposed to respond to just keeps expanding?
Well, as you know, these are public hearings, so we take the comments.
Right, but we would like some direction from the board to say, those are things, because we just asked things which, despite the, uh, request of the chair, as already mentioned many, many, many times. And, and I thought we had addressed, I thought Mr. Ellison had looked at this, I thought our engineers had looked at this. We've discussed this, we have it at the meetings, other people have already given their opinions, so I don't know when, when it ends or if you need additional information or whatever, because the town consulting engineer who the town has picked seems satisfied with these issues, so I just don't...
Well, we have to wait until we draw our decision, and we'll, we'll get down to some of this stuff, we'll be addressing, we take everything under our grasp.
Well, so I think you need to give a little, a little correction, because, you know, it's not just the review engineers' comments that need to be addressed. Don't you want your board comments addressed?
Absolutely, yeah.
I, I think that says something right there.
So, just to ask another question, but maybe I misunderstood this, not being familiar with, uh, a neophyte this area, is, at the design review committee, the design review committee, as the planner properly said, makes findings, of which they had. And I guess there was some confusion on what day the twenty-fifth of the week was of the month. So, apparently that's that, so we cannot respond to that. But, separate and distinct from that, they're making those findings, and so I'm assuming that the purpose of the design review committee, who would be expertise is architects, they're going to make recommendations to the board. And I know the board isn't bound by them.
No, it's, they're recommendations from the design.
Right, but I guess in the absence of those, we cannot respond to them, the board can't tell them what they like, so we don't have, right?
But your people, you were not at the last meeting, I'm sure, but, but they have to say, right? Everybody else was here.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Um, Michael Bitner, fifty-six Mordecai Lincoln Road, um, I think that the project developers are fair in saying we shouldn't carry the cost of all of the sidewalks, it's unreasonable. Something needs to be worked out between what they're doing, property next door, doesn't want to dig down their wall, and the town of Situate, because it's dangerous for everybody. The town, their project is going to bring seventy-five people into it, I don't know the exact number, but you're going to be putting a lot more people into harms gray, because it is a tight road, I know first, only firsthand it. I live in the neighborhood, so something has to be done to add sidewalk for everybody's safety, not just their, um, tenants or the tenants next door, it's been neglected for years, and everyone has to have a lot to figure it out.
Yes, Julie, you'll be fine, please put it on. Yes, thank you. Is there anybody online, Carrie?
If anyone online would like to make a comment, now would be the time to raise your hand. Um, if you could do so, we can unmute you so that you can make a comment at this time. I mean, I know this, personal Ryan sent the letter in this morning.
We, we have, we responded to some of this.
She said there was an issue with the, with the hand raising last time.
Oh.
So, I'll unmute her, we can let her make comments if she wants to.
So, Brian, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
So, can, thank you.
Hi, yes, so that, yeah, I couldn't find a raise hand button, but yes, thank you for unmuting me. Um, so I know you said you received a copy of my letter, um, I'm at one Summit Ave, which is off the Mordecai Lincoln, um, neighborhood. And obviously, I'm sure most people in town know that we, we have a lot of issues with the traffic in this neighborhood. Just really surprised, I tried to bring it up at prior meetings, that Mordecai Lincoln was not included in the traffic study. If you go through the traffic study, it's, it's two feet from where all the, the images are shown, showing which directions cars are going, the count of cars going through the Gannet and Countryway intersection. It's not accounting for all the people that divert up and down Mordecai Lincoln to avoid the train, to avoid the light, just to get faster to Cohasset or from Cohasset further down, adding all these people. They're sure, they're for sure going to use that as a cut through, they're going to use it just as part of their day to day, as they should, it's in their neighborhood. Um, it's just, it's disappointing that it's not factored. Um, especially where Mor- Mordecai Lincoln's such a dangerous road to begin with, Countryway doesn't have the sidewalk, neither, neither does Mordecai. Um, it has a painted line, but cars cannot pass, you can't have cars going in each direction without a car having to veer onto the painted sidewalk. So, that's just a big concern for all of us. Um, and another thing, the people who are living in these apartments that are being built, they're going to be, become part of our neighborhood. Their kids are going to go to school with our kids, they're going to have playdates, they're going to be walking the little loop, Countryway, Mordecai, down to Gannet. There's no sidewalks, they're going to have their dogs, it's, they're going to be part of this neighborhood, and we want to make sure that everybody's safe, traffic wise, sidewalk wise, um, so just something I wanted to discuss.
Thank you, Julie, and we have noted tonight that this is an issue bigger than just this one project. I mean, this is something that the town board has asked to speak to, the head of DPW and the county administrator, so this is not far off our radar. Um, no, we do so much at one meeting, and that's not going to be resolved at this meeting, but we have not addressed that. Mr. Orber, could I just ask maybe that at first?
Thank you. Uh, Robert Bowley, thirty-eight Mordecai Lincoln Road, I have actually two things, one has been emailed to me. And one was, uh, is there anywhere on the development line or increasing complex of AJA, of that system? That is out of the question, you mean, or what?
I, I don't, what, most of them.
The other question was, uh, was this basically, was this sort of the AJA, the Asia property, is that anything to do, you know, going on now? That's out of the question.
No, the, the, the property next door?
Yeah.
That is totally separate.
Okay, good, thank you. And just as a, um, neighbor and resident of Mordecai Lincoln Road, where I've been there for forty-five years, I'm just myself kind of an old timer. One of the things that disappointed me, I was talking to someone all about six, three months ago, and it really hit home. He says, oh, since the railroad train has come, I use that right turn to avoid the whole intersection. So we've been eating that since the advent of the train, that extra, uh, uh, traffic. So, just, just a point, that's all.
We, we can't solve the MPTA problem, sorry, Miss Carrie.
I, I think we've already run out today, that our traffic engineers opine that the traffic going down Mordecai Lincoln Road is less than five trips per hour total and is insignificant, so we, we've already stated that tonight.
Traffic issue. Yes, Mr. Orber.
Uh, Karen made the point I made is, if we, if a traffic engineer says that, are we now responding to inadmissible things that have, traffic ended, can contradict our profession, so if that's what we're doing, well, thank you, Karen.
Yeah. That's fair.
Um, Alan Bruce, nineteen Mordecai Lincoln Road, um, question and a comment. Question is, uh, will the general contractor be required to submit a construction management plan with settlement control during the duration of construction?
Yes, sir, yes.
Thank you. Um, not related to the project, but on the traffic on nineteen Mordecai, um, Mordecai Lincoln Road. I don't disagree that the traffic volume, um, is not significant. But what is significant for the neighborhood are, is the speed of the cars and the relative congestion of that street, because it is a narrow street, a car driving over twenty miles an hour on that street feels extremely fast. Um, I would like the city to consider traffic calming measures, especially if we can't bring a fire truck down that road and cross the bridge with it.
Again, that's out of purview on a thousand.
Yeah, like you talked about Bill Belichick, didn't he get the Falcons job, too? We, we're proud of that.
Yeah, we, you know, we, that's kind of out of our purview, uh, we are aware of those issues, but there's some things that the board just cannot deal with, and that's imperative to DPW.
I think you should send something to the traffic rules committee.
Yeah.
Send, send your concerns to the traffic rules committee, who addresses traffic issues in town.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, someone mentioned earlier that, I'm John DeWall from four thirty-one South Main. Um, someone mentioned earlier that we've been working on this for more than a year, and it has been a long stretch. We've all been doing this to get a, a, a successful project here. Uh, and I can sense a desire to get across the finish line. But now's the right time when we need to look at all the details. Um, you know, a, a, a construction sequence, I think, would be a good idea, so that we all have an idea how this project is going to go. Um, the, um, the architect today said that he, you know, found a new sidewalk solution in the backyard. That's going to be on the new plan, right, so we're going to re- review that later on, so. I just want to make the point that now's the time that we really need to look at the, the details here. I was, I was sort of stunned at the tech, uh, peer review, that, I think that's the longest one that we've seen the whole year that we've been working on this. And some of those things that he brought up were things that were brought up, uh, not once but twice before, recommended that they get resolved. Um, so let's just keep on working on this thing, getting the details.
I would say, the devil was in the details, and that's what we're working on right now.
Thank you very much.
Is everybody all set here? Are we all set?
Are you ready?
No, 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 we're, don't be so hasty, I guess.
Wait for it.
Wait, oh.
When do you think you're going to be ready to come back here and present the, the new plans and resolve some of the issues? I mean, we were supposing that it would be on March twenty-eighth, but what is your opinion of when you would be ready?
The things that are-
I'm ready right now.
Yeah, so the comments that we received from TEC, I pretty much have done. Um, I don't need, I can have them into you next week.
Well, what about the traffic engineer, I mean, the traffic discussion?
Yeah, the open end of this, items that we discussed about not having a sale, uh... I can't, I can't control those.
Mr. Stone, do you think you can get a, in contact with the other traffic engineer, AOSAP?
Yeah, absolutely, probably next week, and we can, we can work through some, some solution out there.
So?
So, Mr. Ellison, if they submit something next week, when do you think you'd have it reviewed by?
Uh, we typically request two weeks.
Okay, everybody get your calendar, okay.
So, is that suggesting February twenty-second for the next meeting? If stuff gets submitted next week?
Two weeks. Is that about time, Mr. Ellison?
Yeah, that would be, that would be fine with TEC, yep.
And you think the traffic can be discussed by then?
Yes.
Okay, so then?
So we expect something in writing from the traffic people through the job planner please?
Yep.
Okay. And we hope to have the, uh, design review committee recommendations in the next week. So, why don't we go from February twenty-second at six-thirty?
That's what's bothering me, well, completely. Are we ready?
Will you be able to resolve the, the handicap design stuff with the building commissioner?
Yes, I spent time on that today, look at it, I'm almost there.
All right. I'm going to accept the applicant's request to continue public hearing, recycling administrative review and a special permit. For, is, is it still four, or was it?
No.
No, three.
Three.
Three multifamily buildings and stormwater permit in the village center admitted in the district, North Situate Village, district outer village, B C N, N S V, O V.
DCM, NSV, Ovi until February 22nd, on 24th at 6:30 PM. And to continue the time for action for filing with the town court to, I don't make 24.
Say April 15th.
All right.
Excellent.
April 15th. You're second. Second.
Second.
On April.
If you can open?
I think it's.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
See, I, I make sure that I understand all the things that are gonna be addressed. They, they went through and said, Board of Health just said, okay, what's something that says that?
I haven't even, no, I sent you the note.
And then they said, I'm gone, there's.
We are getting anything from the contract.
Okay, so we don't need to address that.
No.
Um, and then he needs to address all the comments that he just verbally went through.
Yes.
On the TEC report.
Yeah.
Right? And then we need to address the, uh, vehicle site, right? Vehicle safety, right?
Yeah.
Just track safety's all down. And then there's pedestrian access safety, right?
Yeah.
Uh, and then there's the design review committee.
Yeah.
Comments and then resolution thereof, I guess.
Yeah.
Uh, and. Um, was there anything that needed to be addressed? I think we're okay on things like snow removal and stuff.
Well, no, snow removal is a big problem.
Why?
I guess they were taking up 20 parking spaces with snow removal.
Right, but what we've said is.
He says he's, he says he's revised it, so we'll, we'll look at it.
Right. That'll be addressed in the next segment.
It'll be addressed in a minute.
Soonly they're.
Right, I mean, oh, assumably they've addressed it.
But at least we can condition that it be moved, right? That it not all be stored on foot.
Yeah, that you can't take up 20 spaces.
Right, I mean, that's, that's the condition, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So we can resolve that. I'm just trying to get to the places that we have things that need to be resolved. I want to make sure we have addressed these things. That he's gotta address the building commissioner comments on the ADA.
Yes.
Yes.
Um. Is there anything else?
I mean, I think, we think we got them to agree that they need a special permit and you're gonna give it to them and just drop it because it's already advertised. So let it go, let it go.
It's not a dogged one.
But.
Building water in.
Yes.
Good.
I mean, that's the summary, I think, I mean.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure I had them all, right?
I think of a few other issues, yeah, but you know what? Doesn't seem to matter, I think, so that's.
Yes, it does. Will you drop?
It's decompeting, it's.
Segmenting, yeah.
Well, he said that it's on and dropped.
Yeah, it's not. I mean, I read that sequencing plan in, in detail and I didn't see what he said. But, you know, well, we'll, I'll read it again, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's, it's not a phased project. It's all gonna be built all at once.
Right.
But then. That's critical, right?
Right.
And I wanna end up with that project here.
Wait, one other thing though, and you probably have it in there, but I just wanna, I already have it down. So, um, the safe site distance seems to be one has nine feet, one has 14. Is that correct? So I mean, which one is correct?
What, we, we let the traffic engineers iron that out. Okay, that's, that's what they're.
Okay, so that's what they have to.
That's what they have to iron out. That is, that's exactly what they have to iron out. And, you know, we go from there.
But, you know, also Karen, if you have issues or concerns that we have had, that we haven't figured out, please.
I try to raise them, I know.
Well, if I missed them, what's, this one?
If we've missed it, tell us, please. Yeah, well, I forgot one, I forgot one tonight.
That's okay.
They have too many parking spots. Do you want, is that too many parking spots? No, I think you opined last time that because some of them might involve snow removal, it was good.
Uh, I think everywhere I go, there's not enough parking spots.
But just not in Pine Hills. There's no place to stop.
So I thought you opined.
I think when you have the town at the service not having more parking spots, so I'm all about, be more parking spots.
But, you know, we just, wait, we'll discuss all the issues on January 22nd and, you know, um, you know, hopefully there'll be several meetings between, you know, now and then. They've never asked for an individual client meeting, you know, but whatever.
I, I think what is mixed up is interest tonight that is really is, really what is not to burden them at the hundred percent of the sidewalk cost.
No, I mean, and I also think, but I mean, Mr. Arbber, it actually insisted that we say that we would not.
We think that there has to be some kind of a solution between the town and with all the projects on Countryway. And I noticed as we did in Red Bush, I mean.
And like I said, I sent an email today saying we really need to sit down and talk about it.
Unfortunately, all those people are there, so we can't talk to people who are there, so that's not right.
Yeah. But anyways, so that's where I think we are at, you know? Um.
Okay, so long this.
It's a long website.
It's not as long as it was, but it's still pretty long. Okay, so now we have our planning and development.
We've got the Laurelwood Common Driveway in.
You don't like it?
Not, no, I don't.
Okay.
Um, expect next time that you're gonna have a Sherby reduction for Curtis Estates. Peter Palmieri is going to site tomorrow. Um, we have, we filed for a preliminary approval for MBTA compliance and we know that they got it. And we had some problems. We've been sending some emails for over a month and we finally got a response this morning. And so, um, Shari had to put a zip file together. We had sent some of the information, but, you know, we gave them all this whole shootback for the compliance model, which we had thought, it was hard to upload because you can only have four sub-districts. And we have five sub-districts and the two mandatory mixed use. So it was, it was difficult. And we've had emails into the state since December 20th, when we filed for the mandatory mixed use. And we had, today was the first time we got a response back and I only answered the question from yesterday and didn't answer the previous questions, working my way back. Um, there is a meeting on February 8th with town council and, um, the sale people. So, and hopefully Mr. Sullivan.
I'm sorry, who are the sale people?
That the independent, the.
The group home.
The group home type thing.
Oh, okay.
That's.
The neighbor.
For something. Supported access to independent and living.
Sure.
So it's gonna be a big Zoom meeting with Patty and I will attend. Uh, town council will attend, uh, Mr. Drew will attend. I, I asked Bond and Neil to sit in on it too and Mr. Sullivan and the sale people. So hopefully we will get an idea of where we're going and what, in what way, shape or form we're going.
Are you all prepared?
Yeah. Okay, so I have two things. Uh, to not miss Mr. McLean's last meeting. Yeah, I'm sorry he picked up his resignation, but like moves on and we will miss you and stop by and see us. We know where you live, also.
Thank you.
If we're ever gonna vote, do we get the vote on whether he can design?
No, I don't wanna sit in the next round. Get out of here. I'm gonna be.
Oh, it's gonna be worse. You're not deciding.
And, and the other thing I think that we need to take into consideration is as we move forward to the town meeting, uh, we're gonna be presenting this MBTA thing. I'm gonna make a request to the town moderator that Karen presented this to town meeting. Because there's all kinds of little incidental, innocuous things that she knows that we'll be struggling with and we don't wanna, we're quite, we don't know what we're talking about. She normally knows all the answers, so I'm gonna ask the moderator that she decided that, okay?
We can ask that the moderator.
Yeah, I think that that would be the most efficient way to present that to the town, is through the town.
I mean, we're, we're ultimately gonna have to decide if you want to present PowerPoint or not want to present PowerPoint. Do you just want to do a, a more of an abbreviated PowerPoint? Um.
Yes.
Just have, just showing basically.
You're gonna bear the people the details of it, and get it at the eye and on the face.
Showing the two, the districts, maybe that's it.
Yeah.
Um, I can let you know, I, I'm presenting, um, part of a panel on February 13th to lead the women voters in Hingham. And I have now down our slideshow a little bit. I don't have to cover the law, but I have to cover what Sitewood's doing. So in, in five to seven minutes, which won't be an issue. Um, but I can see how the reception is because we, Shari has pared down the, um, the PowerPoint to make it Sitewood friendly. Not going.
So you wanna share that with us?
I can.
I mean, once you've presented it, just.
I can, I can, I mean, I can show you the PowerPoint. I can send you out the PowerPoint now.
If you have to look at it, I mean, you definitely want the feedback too, as to how it'd record it, but.
Yeah. Somebody else is gonna take care of all the basics of the legislation. I don't have to do that, but, you know, I'm just trying to say what Sitewood is doing. I did, I did put some stuff in there about the mandatory mixed use district, you know, what you have to have and what we have to have, you know, 1,239 and all that kind of stuff. I'll send it out to the board.
Yeah, is that a Zoom meeting?
No, it's at the, it's at the Hingham, down hall.
Just didn't know if it was something.
No, it's just, yeah.
Well, I don't know, I don't know what they're doing.
Go to Hingham Hall.
Yeah, and go watch it.
Don't worry, the else, uh. I'll make a motion, second.
Oh, the favor.
Uh, hi. You go back, Mr. McLean.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, thanks for the. Sorry to see you go.
Really?
You don't get a stranger.
I won't.
That we're all set?
You're good to go? Okay, thank you. Have a good night.